Good evening. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for Thursday, November 18th, 2021, relative to Bills 2021-1986, 2021-1943, and 2021-2059. The clerk, please read the title of the bill.
Bill 1986, in ordinance, amend the city code at Title I, Administrative Article 11, Human Resources, Chapter 192, Pensions, Municipal Pension Plan Number 2, Section 19223, Contribution by Members in Section 19226, Pension Allowance in Order to Remove the Social Security Offset for Non-Union Members and to Fund the Removal of Offset, Bill Number 1943. In ordinance, supplementing the Pittsburgh Code at Title I, Administrative Article 11, Human Resources, Chapter 192, Pensions, by adding subsection 192023, so as to add language to allow for elimination of the Social Security Offset for Municipal Employees, Bill Number 2059, in ordinance, amend the city code, so as to extend the life of the parking tax asset and make related changes to effectuate that extension.
Thank you. And for the record, we are joined tonight by Councilwoman Gross, Councilwoman Kraus, and I just want to thank you both because you put in a very long day today and stayed here for this meeting tonight. So, thank you both. And we may be joined by other members throughout the evening. Our first order of business will be to an introduction of the legislation by our Budget Director, Bill Urbanic, Council's Budget Director, Mr. Urbanic?
Yes, I'm going to share the screen here if I can. There we go. Wrong thing. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Well, as you prepare, I'll just make sure the public knows that as soon as you're done with your presentation, we will hear from our registered speakers.
There it is. Okay, sorry for the technical difficulty here.
I can sing and dance.
Do I have the right screen up?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, good. Let's go to presentation. There we go. Okay, how we'll start this is just for the public's general information, what is the Social Security Offset and why we're removing it. Social Security Offset applies to certain non-uniformed city retirees that were hired after June 2004 per Act 47. It was a cost-saving measure. Prior to that, in 2000, the offset had been eliminated by the Murphy Administration. The offset requires that when these retirees receive their Social Security, their city pension check is then reduced by up to 50% of their Social Security amount. So, at the time, folks need that most it gets reduced. There are three bills that we are considering in order to have the offset removed. The first bill is Bill Number 1943. This provided for prohibition on pension enhancements, and what we're doing here today is making an exemption specifically for the Social Security Offset. This simply allows us to proceed with that offset elimination. We're also doing an amendment to Bill through Bill Number 2059, which amends the legislation that created the parking asset. It was created in 2011. It extends the length of time the city commits the $26.7 million in tax revenue to create a present value, and it does that by extending it 10 years. It keeps our funding level over the state-required 50%. Currently, the value is declining to the extent that it is decreasing the funding level of the pension. By extending 10 years, the value will be increased by approximately $45 million. The amendment also includes language to allow it to stay in existence until the funding ratio reaches 80% without the asset. Right now, without the asset, we are near the 50%, about 49%, which requires the asset to go away. We don't want that to happen yet. Increasing the value on this will also help to soften the near-term impact of eliminating the offset on paper. The city ordinance requires a goal of budgeting for pension expense. So, basically, what we're doing right now anyways, regardless of what increase we have, is we're budgeting for the pension expenses and not just going by the state-required MMO or the actuarially recommended contribution, which only funds part of the pension. This allows the principal to gain interest. Okay, and we'll, let's go back. One. Okay, and now to the meat of matter, and that's Bill 1986, and that's the actual elimination, the offset, that pension ordinance that we have in the code. What 1986 does is amends the city pension ordinance to eliminate the offset for those non-union employees that are affected by the ordinance. The offset removal only applies to non-union employees due to collective bargaining. However, this opens the door for unions to bargain for the removal. Employee contributions by this is raised up to 6% only for those non-union employees hired after the 2004 and currently have the offset pension reduction applied. Current affected employees will need to irrevocably opt-in to have that offset removed. New employees will automatically be placed into the new plan. The offset, and will not have the offset, but will pay up to the 6% employee contribution. The offset removal only applies to active non-union employees and is not retroactive. The cost of the pension ordinance by eliminating the offset, the actuarially approved liability for the fund would increase by $9 million for non-union and $21.8 million for union members. The actuarial cost for non-union only, and that would be the annual amount, is $2 million annually, reflected in the future actuarially recommended contribution, the ARC. That, we won't see that increase until the year 2023. If the unions successfully bargain for the removal of the asset, that amount increases up to $5 million annually. By increasing the employee contribution to 6% for all applicable non-union employees, it can raise approximately $500,000 or 25% of that annual cost. If all union employees are included in that amount, is then $1.3 million or approximately 23% of all annual costs. And that's all I got for you. And if you have, if members have any questions, if they want to ask me now or at the end of the meeting, I will be here and available for you. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Bill, for joining us and for that presentation. We'll move on to our registered speakers first, and then we'll open it up to members. And for the record, we are also joined by Councilman Bobby Wilson, who's also been here all day. Thank you, Council. Our first registered speaker is Mark De Pasquale, and I would just say that after we hear from our registered speakers, registered speakers will have three minutes, and after we hear from our registered speaker, we'll open it up for testimony from anyone in the audience who would like to address council, and you'll get one minute to speak. So, our first speaker is Mark De Pasquale. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Mr. Mark De Pasquale. My address is 1411 Grandview Avenue, Apartment 406. I'm an employee in the Department of Public Works with a total of 15-year service with the City of Pittsburgh. I serve as the elected municipal representative for the Pension Board, the regular Pension Board, and also the elected municipal representative for the Comprehensive Investment Board. In that capacity, I also serve as Vice President on both of those boards. Been on those boards for two years, and that's when this offset really hit me in the face. I received from employees, and there's a couple of them here today in support of what I'm going to talk about, is at least 50 calls a month from employees hearing how unfair and egregious this rolling is that affects only a certain group of employees from 2004, yet the problems began in 1975, then came to a head in the mid-2000s with the bankruptcy and Act 47, yet this very small group of people are penalized the entire amount. And as Mr. Urbanic pointed out, up to 50% of your pension is taken away when you turn 67. I guess with the theory that now you can go to work. Who wants to go to work at 67? You lose 50%, 50% of your pension, and it almost ensures that employees that have dedicated their entire life to public service with the City of Pittsburgh will not have a quality, a high decent quality of life in their retirement. And this egregious policy just needs to go away. It puts so much stress on our workforce. It causes people to retire, to either retire late, work into their 70s, or they quit before they become vested because they can find better benefits elsewhere, and it puts a very, very hard impact on the City of Pittsburgh. So, first and foremost, I want to thank council for taking this issue up, for your concern for the employees and their quality of life, for your courage and tenacity, because this has been a hot-button issue, and especially Council President Smith. And I just urge you to please don't lose this moment. Let this horrendous, horrific policy go away once and for all. And Godspeed in your work, and everybody have a happy and blessed Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any speakers in the audience that would like to comment? Just, I'd like to also mention that we are also joined by Director Manuel from the HR Department, and she's also on the Pension Board. Thank you, Director, for being here. And I'm going to say Tom Joyce is here. I have to say Tom Joyce. He's friends with my sister-in-law. I have to be nice. But we also have testimony that we'd like to have read into the record. Madam Clerk, you have something, and Councilman Kraus, you have something, correct? Okay, and we're also joined by Councilman Lavelle, our Finance Chair, who is also on the line and has also been here all day. Thank you, Councilman.
We have a letter from John Sibbit. Says, "Dear Madams and Sirs, as President of the City of Pittsburgh Municipal Pension Board, for the last 20 years, I respectfully request that you take the necessary action to eliminate the Social Security Offset for our affected employee members of the Municipal Pension Fund. The Social Security Offset is a hardship to our hard-working employees, preventing them from retiring at the normal retirement age. For those pensioners who are subjected to the offset, their financial stability is greatly compromised. The average offset amount can be from $300 to $500 per month. This is not fair. I trust you help our fellow employee members respectfully. John R. Sibbit, President, City of Pittsburgh Municipal Pension Fund." Lisa Choffey, send this to love. Conference in Louisville, there's no attachment.
Did you read it, Councilman? I don't want to put the Madam Clerk in there.
I don't want to have it. This all I have.
This came in today.
Recording in progress.
Offset that would otherwise follow me into my retirement from the city. Additionally, I want to report that I've had several good employees over the years that the city invested time and training in leave forestry only after fully understanding that the Social Security Offset and how it will affect their retirement, not to mention recruiting new employees and having to explain this. I believe it's unfair and undeserving of our loyal employees who truly care and love their jobs and our great city. Thank you for your consideration of this matter, and it's signed, Lisa Choffey.
Thank you. And we also received about 200 signatures from Councilman Coghill, constituent of his, and 70 from John Sibbit, also all in favor of us ending the Social Security Offset. And so, with that said, I'm going to turn it over to members, but I'm going to start with our Finance Director, Councilman Lavelle, if you have any comments.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be very brief. This is absolutely the right thing for this council body to be doing. And so, I want to thank you for your leadership. Thank Councilman Kraus as well, as Councilman Coghill for grabbing signatures. Our hard-working employees absolutely deserve this, and I also just want to thank our Budget Office for the work they've put in to help advance this and move this forward.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you to you and Councilman Burgess as well. Councilman Kraus, I'm going to turn it over to you, and then we'll go down the line.
So, yeah, thanks, Madam President. Appreciate it. So, this topic has come to light many times over the last probably two decades, and the Social Security Offset was put in place at certain times under the Murphy Administration, taken away, at certain times put back in, taken away, and it almost became a yo-yo effect, if you will, to the financial security of many of our employees, wondering if they would get a pension, if it would be reduced, whether, you know, the offset was in place or it was taken off. And ultimately, the last time it was removed was under Act 47. But I believe that this council, especially this council and this administration, over the last 15 years, have really, really behaved responsibly in terms of fiscal matters. We write at a terribly, terribly difficult time when the city really was at the brink of bankruptcy. We spent a lot of years tightening our belts, saying no to many things that we wanted to accomplish so that we could get our financial house in order, and we have gotten our financial house in order, and we are, you heard the mayor make the remarks. It is State of the City Address that the pension is funded to 72%. We started at 27%. It's funded at 72%. But the one thing that really pushed me over the line beyond our fiscal health and the responsibility that we took to get us there was the passion that this council has to always support working people. You will always find today, you saw members at a rally today in support of working people and their right to living wage and, you know, their benefits and those kinds of things. And so, it began to bother me that when it comes to going out and supporting publicly other employment entities in the way they treat their employees, it became important to turn the camera in on ourselves and say, but what are we doing to protect our employees? And we do, as Mark described, we have a very, very, you know, you know, unfair section of employees that we target specifically by saying, you don't have the right to bargain, you don't have the right to collective bargaining at this, at this time anyway. And I guess because you don't have anyone fighting for you, representing you, we can treat you this way and impose the Social Security Offset on you and jeopardize your financial stability in your retirement years. And it just, as Mark said, and many other people have said, it's unfair. It is unfair, and I believe it's the role of this council to fight for those employees that don't have collective bargaining or right to organize at this time and protect their financial health and well-being in their retirements. And so, you know, I'll echo Councilman Lavelle's remarks that it's absolutely the right thing for us to do, that we have a history of fighting for working people, and this is just taking it one step further and making our own houses in order, that we're caring for our employees the proper way. We are, as you heard the Budget Director explain, we are fiscally healthy to be able to do that. We hope to remain fiscally healthy to continue to do that, and that it's the obligation of this council to protect the employees that we have and make certain that they're cared for in their retirements. And so, I'm full speed ahead, I think you know this from the very beginning, in support of this, and appreciate the council's support of this as well, and the leadership that brought us here. And I absolutely can assure you that when this comes to the vote, I will be a yes vote. Mention offset.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, did you want to say anything?
Also, yeah, I'm grateful to everyone who made comment tonight and for the letters of support that we've received and the people who signed the petitions. The way I've understood this is that when the city was at its most desperate time, there were these positions that weren't under union representation that really bore the brunt of cost-cutting measures, of austerity measures. And this is not that time. The city has financially recovered, and it is time to reinvest in those people who don't have union representation. So, these 700 out of 4,000 city employees, these 700 or so positions that don't have union representation really deserve full pension benefits, and they really, it's beyond time that we restore those benefits, right? And that's what we're considering now. And so, I'm really glad that we, the city is at the financial security that it is, and we need to pass along those financial security benefits to these employees. And so, I think it's actually a moment for celebration that we are able to do that, and we can reinvest in these employees. And we've been fighting for better wages as well. We invested time and energy this summer in talking about raising wages for our summer employment and our seasonal employees at the Parks and Rec level, and I'm glad that we were able to do that and see some better wages. And it's past time that we also invest in solid benefits and pensions for those same employees. So, glad to be here tonight.
Thank you, Councilman. Glad you're here. Councilman Wilson, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I know this isn't a post agenda, but can I ask the Budget Director questions?
Yes.
It'll help me. You know, so, thanks. So, what happens to, so these bills only consider non-union employees? I listened to some of the comments, and I just want to know.
Yes, that's, that is correct. The Law Department assisted in putting this legislation together. They reviewed and finalized it. There was additional language we were trying to write in, and the Law Department made clear that we could not bargain for the administration. That's both against our code as well as state law. These things will need to be bargained in, but it does open the door to allow that bargaining to take place.
So, how many employees would this cover?
Yeah, right now, with the non-union, I believe around 400.
And it would be up to?
It's almost 500.
It'd be up to the mayor to then enter into those bargaining, like during the times of bargaining, that they could?
I believe they can open their contracts for this. That will be up to the administration.
So, you can't just do it as a side agreement. You'd have to open up the whole contract, right?
I know there's, there's one, one of the unions may have that option already to have it opened.
And what does that figure look like?
As far as cost?
Yeah, yeah. So, this one, my understanding would increase the pay in 2% more. So, that goes from 4% to 6%, and then we'd have to add in a couple more million dollars to the?
That's right. Well, the total that, how would it affect this annually would be in the actuarially required contribution and the MMO, which is the municipal minimum contribution obligation. That would be $2 million for the non-union. Total for all employees that don't have the offset currently, if they were added in, it would be an increase of $5 million on an annual basis.
So, if it went from 500 and then all the, all the unions with the city, that would, you know, if the mayor would, you know, this mayor, future mayor would agree to, you know, that in their bargaining, that would be an additional $5 million or just?
It would be an additional $5 million annually in the future.
Annually in the future?
Yeah.
The whole lift would be $7 million every year?
The whole lift would be $5 million. I'm sorry.
Okay, $5 million.
So, $5 million, $2 million.
Just three, three more million dollars.
Plus, if, if the 6% is also bargained in, that will be a total, it would reduce it by $1.3 million, and that total expense would be approximately $3.7 million annually.
Mm-hmm. And all unions are affected by this? The only ones that aren't affected are fire, police, and are EMS affected by this as well?
Well, EMS, the Fraternal Order of Paramedics, do not have the offset. They've had it bargained out.
It's all public safety. They don't have the offset.
We also have the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority members who are part of our pension fund. They also do not have the offset.
So, I definitely want to support workers. I'm curious on what the numbers are if you offer a, to not, to the non-union employees, if the, well, first off, you said saying there's an opt-in. So, what does that mean? What does the opt-in mean?
The opt-in, in order to do this properly, is you're creating a new class of employees. So, the employees that currently have the offset would need to opt-in to a new classification, to a new group, and they would then say, yes, charge me the additional pension amount and remove the offset.
We'd have to have?
For new employees, they would pay, they would automatically go in this plan for new non-union employees, and they would pay the 6%.
Does it work if some people don't opt-in? Does it?
Yes, it'll still work because those people will no longer, will still have the offset.
Okay. I have not flirted around the appetite of this, but I just want to ask the question. I mean, look, at the end of this, I just want to do what works for workers, and the offset is taken away. I just want to ask the question. I don't want to throw a dagger at anything, but, you know, for non-union employees that work, say, we have different people in different departments, even like directors, you know, they're not going to, likelihood of them being here for 10 years isn't always the case, or, you know, they're not always, I don't know the language, but they're not always invested in, they're always not always vested in the, you know, in the pension. So, do we have numbers on if there was like a 401K match option for non-union employees?
That was not looked at. In order to do this, we had to get an actuarial analysis, and that question was not asked. I would have to, and council would have to request it as well from the Finance Department.
Because just, I'm just wondering how much, you know, say someone stays here for six years or even the, you know, X amount of years more, and they're still not of the age to retire. You know, how much do they get back? If someone, like, what's the percent? Does it actually follow, you know, what, you know, what the market's doing? Like, would they get the 6% or the 8% compounded over the years they've been here? How does that work?
No, no. There's simple interest paid out on your, on the amount of money that you have held of 5%, and it's not compounded. It's simple.
So, 5%, okay. That helps me because at the end of this, I don't want to leave the workers that would never, you know, I'm, okay, so they would get 5%. Does that change?
No, no, that stays, that's static in the code.
Okay. Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. And just to be clear, I did actually have this conversation with our- by union representation have been held hostage long enough, waiting for us to address this issue. And so we're going to move forward with one track. At the same time, we're going to work on other issues as well. So we're not, we're trying not to leave any employee out. We talk all the time about how we want to treat other people and how other people should treat their employees, how we want people to be paying employees minimum wage of $15. Now, we don't do it ourselves always. We talk about how, you know, we want people to be respected and treated well, and yet here we are allowing people to retire with a part of a pension, and sometimes, in some cases, they didn't even know about it until it was time for them to retire, and it's heartbreaking when you, when they find out. And I just think when we're talking about how we should be treating other people, we need to start in-house with our own people and treat our employees and let them know how valued they really are. And so with that said, this will be on the agenda for next week, Madam Clerk, please. Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Let's adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.